If you could just introduce yourself and who you're with, please. I don't know if that's on.
How's that? Nancy Ward with the Port of Columbia County.
Sorry, Gina Cisco, I'm the Communications External Affairs Manager. And as I mentioned earlier, Sean Clark unfortunately wasn't able to, he was, wanted to be here today, but he regrets and will reschedule.
Put it online and hear you unless you speak right into the.
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, okay.
It's just for the recording and for people attending virtually and listening to it later, so just as close as you can get to it.
Okay.
So we're just here today to bring you up to date with what's going on at the port. And to go in depth, Gina has been doing an amazing job with our industrial lands inventory. It was actually done several months ago. And then the rail study, which is coming to its completion here shortly, we hope. And also to let you know that we seem to have a whole different relationship with the rail now. And we are really encouraged by the communication and the collaboration that the railroad, both the local P and W and Genesee Wyoming, which is the parent company of GNW. They were out here for, they were invited to be part of a community chat. We have started up like a quarterly get together in the community, talking about issues that relate to the community or issues that are of interest to the community. They were our first guests and they came in force. There were four people from the railroad that came and participated in that. And then as a result, we asked them if they'd like to come back and have a more in-depth talk with the people, the staff at the port and also have a tour of Port Westward. We have also invited the people from the communities, the city administrators and the mayors and such to join us in that tour out at Port Westward. And so we're hoping that we're moving into a new era with communication with the railroad, which is something that we have been working on for a very, very long time. You're probably aware of that. So other than that, let me turn it over to Gina. I think you'll be very interested in the results of both of these studies.
Thank you.
I am gonna start with the industrial land inventory. Get this going, sorry.
Do you mind switching microphones? Yours seemed to be a little louder.
Gina, is this the presentation that you guys did a while back online?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We did this online and then we were asked to come bring it to you guys also. Oh yeah, I can tell. So we, this project was an initiative from the South County Collaborative Group. But, oh, sorry. Doing something wrong? It doesn't matter. Okay, sorry. We want to acknowledge our funders, first of all. Oh, wait, that's not advancing.
Checkered view is on.
Okay. Okay, sure. All right, so. Okay. Wait, we ready?
We are.
We're awake.
All right, so this project was an initiative of the South County Collaborative Group. And we, first I want to acknowledge our funders, City of Scapoose and Columbia PUD helped. And I'd also like to acknowledge the staff of the county and the cities who provided us with GIS and planning data for this project and the Columbia PUD who gave us data on electric service to the industrial sites. And this project was managed by port staff and guided by a project advisory group that met regularly with our consultant McKenzie. The team for technical review, brainstorm meetings and making decisions at key project milestones. So this was our, our project advisory group that gave a lot of time to this project. And Alex, thank you for your support. Port initiated this project in response to the real market need to have, understand and maintain an adequate supply of developable industrial land to accommodate expansion and growth and the recruitment of employers within the county. The purpose was to determine the supply of developable industrial property sites and where those sites are located. We also wanted to identify any constraints or challenges that these sites may have in bringing them to development-ready status and the investments that are needed to move these sites to market. The project kicked off in September of 21 and wrapped up in January of 22. Just gonna go over the methodology first of how we got to the end of this results. We started with the inventory with a geographic information system process using Esri ArcMap, a mapping analysis tool to identify parcels within the county that were zoned industrial and contained at least five acres of developable vacant land. From there, we did further, McKenzie did further analysis to exclude the flood plains, wetlands, water and streams and slopes greater than 5%. These were excluded because these impacts to environmental areas require extensive permitting and can be prohibitive to industrial development. We also removed parcels currently owned or leased by existing companies for their own future development. And the results created the inventory of industrial sites with five or more acres of net developable. That's what we were looking for is net developable. These sites that were identified were then further analyzed for their development readiness. First by evaluating the utility systems, public utility systems. McKenzie's civil engineers reviewed utility information provided by the local jurisdictions and service providers and developed a scoring system to evaluate the existing capacity of the public water, sanitary sewer and storm systems, assigning a score of A, B or C. Franchise utilities such as the natural gas, electricity and telecommunications were not included, though we did reach out to the PUD to see if electricity was currently available at the sites or if extensions were required. Transportation infrastructure was also evaluated by assessing the surrounding local access quality, defined as access to the immediate transportation systems. Factors included needed access improvements both on and off-site, including site distances, frontage improvements needed, any specific challenges that would take longer permitting or construction, off-site improvement needed, including mitigating for capacity or site distance constraints. Permitting processes such as ODOT approach, rail crossing, access easements would typically extend the process behind, beyond six months. All these sites were then also given a rate and a rating of A, B or C, determining on whether they could be addressed within six months would be an A. Between seven to 30 months would be a B rating and any factors that would require more than 30 months would be a C. Next, we looked at market readiness and availability. Currently listed, whether the sites were currently listed for sale or whether the owners were willing to transact. Even if the site has all the utilities, no environmental constraints, transportation access, sometimes an owner just does not want to sell and then we took that market reality into consideration. We also looked for any specific use restrictions like aviation use only and whether a site needed to be annexed because those can also add overall development time. This is the table that McKenzie then created to analyze the development readiness of the industrial sites. For a site to be categorized as a tier one, it had to be development-ready within six months and require minimal to no additional costs or time. The water and sewers and air be no transportation issues, no use restrictions, no annexation, and the owner has to be willing to transact. For a site to be a tier two, it requires additional time, seven to 30 months. They have a use restriction or some infrastructure or transportation issues. But these, and these are also currently on the market or the owner is willing to transact or it may be unknown. We couldn't, we did actually try to reach out to every owner individually, but sometimes we just couldn't reach the person. I left it as a two if that was the only case. And then tier three require the most time over 30 months and have significant costs to deliver a development-ready site. And some of these sites have significant barriers that may never be available for development. They're just due to money or the property owner may never want to sell. The results were, we found 33 total sites within the county that were the net developable five acres or more. After evaluating these for readiness, we found seven tier one sites, 12 tier two sites and 14 tier three sites. The gross acres of 1,125 and 780 net developable. Looking at the data results by tier and size, most of the sites, 13 of the 33 are in the five to 10 acre range. A quarter in the 10 to 25 acre range and a third are 25 acres and larger. Of the tier one, we found four are smaller than 10 acres and one in the 10 to 25 acre range. And for the larger industrial user that's looking to come to our county, we found only two sites in the county with more than 25 acres. And one of those sites is now actually off the market because they were the Armstrong site and the Air Park Development Site in Scapoose.
Yeah.
We also created this chart showing distribution by jurisdiction because we wanted to see where in the county the sites were located. You can see that all the tier one sites are either in St. Helens or Scapoose, so the southern end of the county. And you can see Scapoose has the most tier two sites as well. Rainier has the most tier three and that was mostly due to infrastructure issues or owners not wanting to transact. And we found that Clatscanine didn't have any sites that met the criteria while Vernonia and Columbia City each only had two. This project focused on available sites of five or more acres. However, we did inventory all of the sites in the county, even the ones that are less than five acres. It's just, this is where the ones we focused on to tier for development-ready status because that was due to time and budget restraints. We found 109 sites that were smaller than five acres and 27 that are owned by existing companies holding the land for future investment or development. And all of these sites are listed in the final report. At the conclusion of the report, we used this data to create an online interactive mapping tool of the 33 identified sites in the county. This website is available on the port's website and on Columbia Economic Team. And let me see, I was gonna try to pull it up for you. Yeah. No, well, I think if the tabs open here. I'm not familiar with teams.
Most people aren't.
Okay, so here's the, the web map that we created on the Columbia Economic Team website. You can see it's similar to a Google Earth type interface. If you click on this little box here, you can put on imagery overlay. And then you can zoom into the various cities and if I can get it. I'm zooming into Scapoose. We have the tier one, two and three sites labeled in your, you know, green, yellow, red to easily identify. If you click on a site, a little pop-up box comes up with the site ID, the tier, the owner, how many gross acres and net developable acres are there? And then if you want to take that site ID number, I have the full report listed on the website. And you can, there's a table with a lot of data that then people can look at to find information about that particular site and the constraints or availability. And this is a tool that I know the economic team has been using and referring people to quite a bit. And then when we get calls at the port for particular industrial sites that we may not have in our portfolio, we will send them to this location where they can then reach out to these people that are willing to transact that might meet their needs.
I have a question.
Yeah.
All these owners listed are willing.
The number ones and number twos, yes. Number threes, no.
And we would just hope that people would be respectful of their decision and, you know, like, how does?
We have industrial zoned land.
Yeah.
We have them listed as no, they don't want, yeah. I haven't had any complaints yet.
Okay.
But yes, it's just, it's all public data. It's all public information that's publicly available. All we did was really compile it together into one location. It's easily to find for people looking. And.
Question.
Yeah.
So the, they all agreed, the ones and twos agreed to sell their land. I'm just wondering how the market is, is that gonna change or?
So this was a snapshot in time.
Okay.
At this point in time when we were doing this project last year. And so that's why in this report, like, it still shows Armstrong is available. Properties are gonna move off. Some of these are gonna get infrastructure upgrades that may move them from a tier two to a tier one. So this is something that's gonna have to be updated periodically and Columbia Economic Team has offered to take that on. So it won't, it's a big undertaking, so it'll probably be, you know, every couple of years, maybe we'll relook at this and then have to go through the report and see which properties are tier and what's available. But at this time, at this point in time, this is done, this was accurate. Yeah.
When you guys did the studies, the, the amount of land companies coming in and broadband, they're gonna be, with that support?
So telecommunications was not one of the criterias that we used mostly. It was just a straight up transportation access, public utilities, willingness to transact. And then we did reach out to PUD and just to see if they did have electric access or if an extension was required. So that was kind of where we stopped. So then it would be up to anyone looking at these properties to do further due diligence.
That'd be, I think, large companies.
Yes.
Do you mind sharing the microphone with her?
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't think that's really gonna be an issue because this, the properties that we inventoried are here in the populated areas that already have internet service.
Right.
Yeah, we're not talking about, nothing in Vernonia, nothing, you know, outside of the normal service area.
Right, I was just thinking like the connection, connectivity, the amounts of more people, more, it's just the technology, the changes or updates or upgrades.
Sure.
So all that's gonna be into that.
Absolutely.
Counselor Asowski.
Yeah. My question, City Manager Rains, is there intention for the city to link out on our website, the map that was generated from this report as part of our economic development resources?
So Isaac, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we link to that already? Yes. Yes, immediately.
Appreciate that. And then I was curious to know, I know that Gina, you'd indicated that this is a living document, we'll call it, a living map, right? Property owners will change hands moving forward. You know, the city was a partner in the initial project. I would see that there's a lot of value for us to support a phase two or a second inventory study that were to take place. Are there already plans reaching out with the current partners to see what we would want to do maybe five, seven years out if we wanted to reevaluate?
Not at this time. We just finished this up and then we'll take it up. Probably not sure the exact timeline. We'd have to talk to Columbia Economic Team on that.
And then I would say, you know, one of the components of the study that you did identify that was not included, and I think it was some of the utility asset mapping. So I would just be an advocate for as we, as we look to, you know, provide as much information as possible to show that this is a lucrative investment option for developers. That in that phase two, if we reach that milestone to move forward, that we would incorporate kind of a new layer, additional layers of information to be incorporated into the study. So thank you for everyone's work on this. Thank you, Alex, for helping the city be involved in this. I find that the findings are very supportive and showing that Scapoose is ready and open for business and development. So I appreciate having this asset and resource available. And thank you to both the court, the court and Columbia Economic Development Team. Thank you.
Counselor Miller.
So first off, I just want to say thank you for the time and effort that the port and everyone else spent on this. The level of detail and what was included, just it's very professional, it's very well organized, it's easy to follow. My first question is, has there been a decision on how often this document will be refreshed?
Not officially. We've been in talks with, with Columbia Economic Team and we know that it's, you know, already, you know, things change so rapidly, but there hasn't been a specific timeline set.
And then what is the roadmap for this document? I mean, how is this document being used? What was the selling point, was the purpose of it when it was initially approved?
The project?
Yeah.
Basically that there was no central location where there was a county-wide inventory of industrial property. You could go to the county website, but you couldn't just, you know, get it at all in one location. And nobody really knew, especially with the privately owned properties, much about them. So just going through and putting all that together in one location where it could be accessed, especially for site selectors and people looking to come out and develop in Columbia County. We have to know what's available that we can market to them.
That's great. So on that, that note of marketing is the economics team, are they using this document to try to bring, to go in and go out and solicit different companies to come in?
I believe, I've, I know, I've, sorry, Paul Vogel, I've spoke with him a lot. I know he has a lot of value in this, that he is related to me, that yes, he's used it quite a bit with different companies and recruitment efforts.
And I would say too, that I've spoken a little bit with PUD and some of the other partners that helped with this. And there has been some discussion that this document could help us then prepare marketing materials now that we have all this base information. So.
I guess what my point is, is that this is a great document and there's a lot of potential for it. I just want to make sure that especially the city, we're taking full advantage of everything that it offers and how it can be used. Thank you.
Are there any counselors online with any questions?
And I would say that it is gonna require the active participation of the cities and the other people involved because the port has limited skin in the game when it comes to industrial property that is not ours. And so, yeah, we were very happy to spearhead this and to get it going, but it's gonna require others to step in and make sure that it keeps up to date and keeps current.
May I ask another question related to that, Nancy? So does the port have the resources or is it the port's intention, do you know, to allocate the resources to do that? Or is that where the economics team comes in and continues it from here? Is there, has there been any like formal?
No. No, there has not. But I can tell you that it is our hope that we will not be relied upon to be the ones to make sure, ensure that the money is there to continue doing this and to make sure that the resources are there and the people are actively participating. So it is, we're here to encourage everyone else whose properties are going to affect you. We want you guys to be in charge of this. And we always want to be there to support all of you in moving forward. But this is really, we're hoping, no longer going to be left up to us to be the main people that are pursuing it.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that so that we can ensure the right resources are allocated here to ensure the port continues.
And I would say too, that the city did contribute funds and time to this original project.
It was very refreshing to see that there were three funders and that we were one of them. So thank you, Alex, for that. Counselor Asowski for the product.
Yeah, I would just can kind of build on the idea of collaboration and how valuable, valuable it is. And I think that this is a perfect example of how, you know, we can build on each other to kind of create a synergy around the development of our community and bringing jobs potentially, hopefully, to our community. And so I think that this is, you know, exactly where we want to be is setting ourselves up to be in that partnership moving forward so that there can be continuity in the work, so.
I do think we all understand that once it's going, it's so much easier to keep it going. If you let it die, if you let it get really out of date, then you're back to square one again. So we certainly will make, do our part to make sure that does not happen.
I also have a rail study to share with you guys.
Thank you. Very hopeful from Nancy's initial comments and the relationship that hopefully is coming from all this.
Is this the same rail study that was, that you also presented or is this?
It's been updated a little bit, but there's portions, because there was the phase one and phase two. So the final report is almost ready to be released. I'm, we had just a couple changes that they're supposed to get back to me at the end of the week and then I'm hoping to roll it out and send it to all of our partners and make it available on the website. So I have some of the, some more data to include into this, but it's just the final report isn't quite been approved yet. I've said a couple of things that I wanted them to fix before we did that. This is the Columbia County Rail Safety and Mobility Study. Just to acknowledge our partners again, City of Scapoose, St. Helens, Columbia City, Clatscanine, Columbia County, Columbia Economic Team, the ports, global partners, renewable fuels. This is a public-private partnership that the port just represented, put together and represented in this group to have this study completed. Purpose of this study was to build on prior studies and evaluate the existing conditions of the at-grade crossings throughout the county and then to develop a list of the top priority crossings and recommend safety and mobility improvements. Essentially, the intent was to serve as a guide for future work and support grant applications to advance the recommendations. The study was broken into two phases. In phase one, our consultant team, WSP, listened to stakeholders and completed site visits to inventory all of the public at-grade crossings in the county. There was 49. The goal was to evaluate them and then prioritize them into tiers. They, phase two focused on conceptual solutions for the top-tier crossings that were identified. And the final report will also include an action plan for our agency partners to pursue next steps for project design and funding. The existing conditions that were identified in phase one of why we did this study, Columbia County is experiencing population and job growth concentrated mainly in the southern end, Scapoose and St. Helens. We, as I said, 49 at-grade public rail crossings throughout the county. Portland and Western Railroad is a private railroad that runs through the county. We have about 90 trains a month, some with over 100 rail cars long, I'm sure you're all aware. And then the travel speeds 10 to 25 miles an hour throughout the county, depending what kind of trains they are. The consultant in phase one conducted six group stakeholder interviews. These people provided local knowledge and experiences and helped guide our decision-making process. Some of what they heard were that the worst congestion events occur in Scapoose during the morning and afternoon school traffic periods and St. Helens when the trains are broken apart in the St. Helens rail yard. There's also an insufficient distance between the tracks and Highway 30 that won't even allow for an entire bus to stop there. Yet the look, the rail is important. It was also noted that local businesses. Yet the look, the rail is important. It was also noted that local businesses in the county do depend on the railroad. It's important for economics in the county. The crossings we developed into three tiers were largely based on safety, number of FRA recorded incidents, public concerns expressed through these interviews, mobility, peak hour vehicles, peak hour delay. And then we use these to, to group the crossings into the tiers. We found nine in tier one, 12 crossings in tier two, and 27 that were labeled tier three. These were the tier one type, tier one prior, top priority crossings that were identified. All of them were in the southern part of the county near St. Helens and Scapoose. They generally have higher vehicle and pedestrian volumes, therefore more conflicts resulting in safety and delay. And they all, area also includes schools that are adjacent to the rail line and Highway 30. The Crown-Zellerback Road and High School Way crossings were added to this grouping, not necessarily due to vehicle delays, but because of safety concerns that were expressed in the interviews and noted by the team during their onsite field inspections. That was the wrap-up of phase one of the study that was completed back in July of 2020. And that was the Columbia County Safety and Mobility Study Existing Conditions Memorandum, title, that is currently available on our website. And then we had a bit of a hiatus with the study due to COVID. We weren't sure how to go about doing more outreach and open houses at that time. So there was a bit of a pause. We got some more funding. We applied for a grant through Business Oregon. And then we started the study back up with phase two with an open house back in November of 21. First thing that we did when we went back to the, starting the study for phase two, is we needed to identify the top three crossings out of the top, of the tier one that were to be addressed based on safety delay and public concern. And of those, the three that were selected were Gable Road and Deer Island Road in St. Helens and High School Way in Scapoose. Gable Road was identified by comments as being the most dangerous and inconvenient crossing in the county, noting for very long waits for unit trains and high levels of traffic due to the adjacent commercial development there. The distance between the tracks and the highway and the railroad tracks and the stop bars is insufficient to accommodate a single modern truck or bus, causing additional backup and lane conflict. And the activities related to the breaking and storing of trains with the rail yard identified as significantly contributing to the delays at Gable Road. The rail yard is located north of Gable Road between, and south Columbia Boulevard, approximately half a mile long between and about half mile long lead tracks at either end of the facility. There's that overview of Gable Road, existing conditions. And then this, the, this is going to be even more congested when those apartments completed near the corner. This is for that even was, this was identified.
Can you remind me how many units are going in there?
No, off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
600, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The previous 2011 St. Helens Transportation, Transportation System Update Plan recommended installation of dual left turn lanes and separate right turn lanes at all four intersection approaches at Gable Road. This would require widening the Gable Road approaches to seven lanes. For example, the south approach would have, there would be two southbound through lanes, two northbound left turn lanes and two northbound through lanes and one northbound right turn lane. Another, they, it also suggested implementing coordinated signal timing along the highway corridor through St. Helens. The 2019 St. Helens River Front Connector Plan also recommended enhancing existing bicycle facilities in the near term to include pavement markings and signage, a separate westbound turn lane, installing a traffic signal at Millard Road, which I believe is currently under construction, which will help shift some of the traffic volumes away from Gable Road. And it was also suggested to consider a grade separation as a long-term mitigation. And that is what we did. So we looked at what a grade separation concept might look like at Gable Road. A grade separation, also known as an overpass, over both the railway and the Highway 30. As, since there is significant right-of-way issues on all four corners of Gable Road, we assessed potential crossing locations within a half a mile north and south of Gable Road and Highway 30. See where would be the best fit, most feasible. The roadway approach grade is set at approximately 5%. So you have to look at 700 feet on each end. Which, yes.
Not that much.
In each direction before the new crossing can get back to existing grade. Did you have a question?
I did. So the, I guess it would be the regulations that were used in understanding what the, the length of this crossing would be. That would be something that we could take, interpret for our own highway crossings that have been brought to our attention. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, this is just a concept of what this could look like, what considerations need to be taken, looked at, rough costs. Yeah, so there's a lot that would have to go into this before it would actually become feasible. It was just, overpasses is something that we hear a lot about eating. And so we took a look at what something like that might look like, what would be involved.
And so this crosswalk, would it be more for bikes and walkways and pedestrians or is it just both?
This is a roadway, high, overpass roadway over the.
It make, would it also be able to bikes and pedestrians?
You know, in the, in the concept, I'm not sure if that was really addressed. I, I think we were, I honestly, I don't know for sure. I'd have to get back to you on that.
They're complaining that they can't cross, right? Right over there and their bikes or pedestrians.
Yes, I we just looked at building the bridge. I didn't, we didn't, I don't think got into that level of detail. Rough costs, those I'm sure be added in if it was going to be looked at in the more detail. After considering the bridge length, wall length, wall length and right-of-way impacts, the, we found the proposed grade separation identified at Port Avenue. So it's Port Avenue there on the east and then it goes across to Maplewood Drive and Matson Street. And then will link back up to Sykes Road. That would be the route. The connection of Matson Street will allow for movements into local neighborhoods and provide connection. And then this is just a proposed drawing, concept of a grade separation. More analysis and engineering would need to be performed to determine feasibility, including building and construction impacts, right-of-way acquisitions, utility conflicts, environmental impacts before a project like this could move forward. We did look at cost though, just to get an idea of what a crossing like this would cost when escalated, sorry, to 2030, a rough order of magnitude is approximately $61 million. The majority of which would be in construction. Funding a project of this size would require multiple funding sources and some of them could be sought through federal raised grants. So it's letting people know what this would actually consist of, getting an idea of that.
Counselor Miller?
Yes, a question. So an overpass versus like a tunnel or something, were those different scenarios already looked at? Or how did, what they come up with?
That's something that we were brought, has been brought up by multiple stakeholders of an overpass over in St. Helens and in Scapoose for emergency services to help access both side of the rail tracks. So that's something that we wanted to look at. It was between that and an underpass, like under the roadway for the cars?
Yeah, or like a tunnel or, I, I seem to vaguely remember during the webinar when this was presented a few months back, that there was a discussion that about different options. It wasn't just an overpass.
I think they were, this was actually the least expensive option. So tunneling would be far more expensive.
Mostly a rock and sand.
That's true. And the railroad isn't going to really mess with their tracks. So it's up to the road to go around the rail, for the most part.
Property owners also own underneath their property as, as well, correct?
I'm talking about the
Like mineral content underneath, I mean, I look to our legal counsel.
That's so, well, the, the railroad actually has a huge amount of, say, in what they, they have special rules that are unique to them as compared to any other regulated entity. An example of an underpass would be something like the Powell Crossing in Portland. Where, you know, there's a, and, and I, knowing how feasible that would be, it would, it would depend on the soil and, and a lot of other factors. I mean, it probably isn't going to be as long of a span as an overpass, but there might be other reasons why it's less feasible. And it also might, I don't know if that would interrupt railroads usage if you're going under instead of over, but I could, I could see how that's possible. So, you know, I, I mean, we can all point to underpasses in, in the, in the metro area, but it might not, as far as feasibility, it might just not be there.
The purpose of this, we, we, we focused on just an alternative for an overpass. So that would be a separate, something, since something that would have to be considered separately. The Deer Island Crossing, a few concerns at this crossing was that the turn lane vehicle storage has deficiencies, not enough lane striping to meet the minimum storage. And safe pedestrian crossings were crucial for those walking and biking to the Columbia County Rider Transit Center that's located at the counter, at the corner of that crossing. And the queuing, the intersection exceeds 550 feet in the westbound direction, blocking access to the, to the, and from Oregon Street and to the, the county rider. Improvements at this crossing that were proposed are the installation of passive or active warning signs at the intersection to better direct drivers and restrict turning during signal preemption. Remove the vehicle queuing on Deer Island Road between Oregon Street and Highway 30 and replace with pre-signal at Oregon Street. Also close that side of the tracks to pedestrian and bicycle crossing. The placement of pre-signals or also known as queue cutter signals to ensure vehicles don't enter the crossing when turning onto Highway 30. And channelization with fencing, swing gates and associated warning devices for pedestrians and bicycles at that crossing. And the third crossing that was looked at in depth was the High School Way in Scapoose. Remains a location with significant concerns with high pedestrian and automobile traffic. Stakeholder comments identified school bus turning movements as a key concern. And additional concerns were the tracks act as a barrier for the emergency services with the police department on one side of the tracks and the fire department on the other. Stakeholder recommended improvements that were suggested were an exemption to the state's school bus crossing standards to allow roll-through movements and enable buses to make compliant left turns. To consider implementing a school walk zone. A pedestrian bridge was suggested extending over both the railroad and the crossing and the highway. Estimated cost for that would be about 10 to 25 million with the significant right-of-way impacts. Fundability for these projects or these type of projects would be section 130 funds, non-federal 10% match required. The pedestrian overcrossing would require more funding and might potentially be able to get raised grants.
I have a question. Is it easier to fund a project like this because it's in a school zone?
Have to, I'm not sure.
My understanding from the railroad is number one, don't look to them for the money.
Great, yeah.
Number two, it's look to Oregon, state of Oregon. And then it would be up to them to decide what the priorities are. But the, on the bright side, if there is such a thing, when it comes to money this large, right now is a good time in our state, in our federal government. So, you know, if we really are serious about doing anything, we need to be working on it sooner rather than later.
And like the theoretical we is the city of Scapoose?
No, I think, you know, yes, if you want, yes, but I think the entire county, all of us along the line, I think you would get lots of support. We need somebody to step up. Somebody needs to really run with this.
And I think it would be a really good opportunity for those stakeholders to reach out to Congresswoman Onamichi's office.
Yes.
As an opportunity to look at the feasibility of what grants may be in the pipeline. That would be opportunistic for us to move forward, something along these lines.
Yes. And, and although the, the railroad, you know, was, was quite blunt about, they are not going to be funding this. They were also very encouraged about, or encouraging about helping us find money. So I think, you know, whoever steps up to the plate is going to get lots of support. But it's going to be a gargantuan job.
I would imagine that every city needs to play a role
Absolutely.
Yes.
Making sure that this happens for their jurisdictions and then the partners in that would be up for the different jurisdictions, such as the city to the state. I mean, we need to take, we would need to take responsibility in that. Of Scapoose. So yeah, I envision it.
Master.
I have a question. The, sorry, not to derail this a little bit, but
No pun intended.
I wasn't going to say that because I don't want to be a nerd, but thank you. So on the FRA incidents column on page, it's on a page. But, do you know what classifies as an FRA incident? Is it a collision of some sort with a car or a person?
Rail and either a pedestrian or automobile.
But it has to, it has to involve a train.
Yes.
Okay.
Is it a fatality or just a collision?
Interesting because I don't know how they get this data, thinking of the Oregon traffic crash report.
I think it might be too, if the train has to stop.
Maybe they have
So if, if the train has to stop, I think that that, that triggers it is, because it would be a reporting requirement for the railroad. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that's the case.
The reason I ask is because the traffic crash reports that law enforcement fills out and the requirements for drivers of vehicles wouldn't necessarily meet the requirement all the time to fill these out. So I'm guessing that the railroad company is mandated to fill some sort of report out to get this. Anyway, sorry, I'm kind of thinking.
Another suggestion for the High School Way was the establishment of a quiet zone. So due to the proximity of multiple schools, which I think that might answer your question about the schools being there. The crossing could benefit from a quiet zone and would, would then require safety upgrades to the current conditions of the crossings. So like a Deer Island Road, the highway crossing would benefit from a combination of upgrading the current crossing conditions and the implementation of active warning devices. The FRA, safety measures required for a crossing to be approved as a quiet zone is it must be a minimum of half a mile in length and include the use of medians and channelization devices, one-way streets with gates and four quadrant gate systems. So the recommended improvements at High School Way here are the installation of vehicle vehicular four quadrant gate system with a separate automatic pedestrian gate, pedestrian channelization with fencing, signage and striping, installation of passive and or active warning signs to restrict turning movements across the tracks, remove the vehicular queuing on highways, on High School Way between the track and Highway 30 and replace with a pre-signal so people can't stop between the track and the light. The placement of pre-signals to ensure they do not enter the crossing when turning onto Highway thirty. And then the quiet zone could be implemented at just High School Way. But the study also suggested that it could extend all the way from Havlick Drive to Crown-Zellerback Road, which would then also address some of the other problem crossings throughout there. The implementation of the quiet zone is guided by the FRA and established through ODOT. So you'd have to work with them to meet the requirements and have it.
I'm sorry, so you need to implement those requirements in order to have a quiet zone?
Yes, and so you would work through the process with ODOT to upgrade all those crossings. And then I think you would, as you're doing that, you would qualify for some funding at those crossings to implement that.
I have a question for Alex. So would this require, if this was something that council was interested in pursuing, or, you know, we even wanted to just look at our different, it seemed like this was the one that was identified out of all of them that was a problem in Scappus. So is this something that would need to like go on a council goal list that then would require, or is this something that we're going to work on no matter what? Or where are we kind of, so we got the information, now what?
So we have certainly contributed financially and with staff time to help with this study. And so it's definitely something we would want to follow. We would treat it as, you know, a master plan, just like the other master plans we have. It would still be, I think, great maybe to identify this specifically as a goal only because that helps us like just simply identify more funds, resources, staff time to it. And then is also realistic of also the other goals in terms of making sure that, keeping in mind how much time and effort something's going to take so that, you know, we're realistic about what the list is. And so that you all are getting, you know, everything out of it that you want. So I think it would certainly be helpful to have it on the goal list if that's really something you want to pursue.
But it's definitely something we're invested in because literally we invested.
So, you know, so, so we're wrapping up this plan. And I would, you know, I would say even from my perspective, simply sitting down and saying, okay, let's talk to the right people and see what the funding really looks like for this, even just to get a real, really, really realistic idea of what it would really take so that we can know at the end of the day if this is something we can actually pursue or not. I mean, because sometimes even when there are grants available, sometimes the matches are considerable depending on the size of your community and the project itself. So I think there's just a lot of things to consider.
Great, thank you.
Be looking at not just the requirements of, like, get the quiet zone, but we would look
Well, I guess, based on just this specific conversation, I was thinking more about focusing on the quiet zones, but it's not that we couldn't do both. The quiet zones obviously are probably going to be more realistic in a shorter span of time, say than some kind of, you know, overpass of any kind, just based on cost, but.
Just think that in, obviously, the new apartments, then to appreciate that quiet zone there, section. But I was thinking it's also the, the part of the, of, part of the master plan is to make sure that Scappus is walkable, and there's going to be more people in that area, residents, that maybe having some type of bridge in the highway would probably that walking.
So we've certainly discussed that a little bit in passing. I would bet that could cost thirty million plus. And also, Highway thirty, as I've learned just from various things, is also a really important trucking route, and it's considered a high trucking route. They have a higher level of clearance or isn't overpassed and things for trucks to get underneath so they can take very, very tall loaded trucks through Highway thirty. So you may not really have a lot of necessarily support from ODOT to be these over the highway. Because we even ran into that, just we want to put signs over the highway. That was a consideration, that it's a tall route, from what I recall. So I think that would be incredibly challenging. I'm not saying it's impossible, but.
And then, as I mentioned, the quiet zone could improve if we, if you did extend it through the entire city, Havlick to Crown-Zellerback. The other tier-one crossings in Scappus would also benefit from those upgrades. And then a couple other alternatives were the placement of the pre-signals at Columbia Avenue, east of the railroad, and pedestrian channelization at Crown-Zellerback. And another consideration was recommended was maybe just an at-grade emergency crossing that are not open to public vehicles and are secured with gates that are only for emergency personnel to go over the rail.
I just want to acknowledge that we have just a couple minutes before I just want to make sure if there's any counselors online, if they have any questions before we move or wrap up, that they chime in.
And then just general improvements throughout the county that were mentioned were better freight signage throughout the county, initiating the safety campaign Operation Lifesaver for education, and then intelligent transportation systems, so commuters can respond to the delay in real time. The final report will list potential improvement alternatives for all forty-nine crossings in the county and next steps for conceptual improvement projects that are identified in the report. And hopefully, like I said, we will get that out and be able to release that in the next week or so. Make sure to share it with you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those presentations.
Yes, thank you for your
Session adjourned.
Your presentations are all